If it's an issue, that's fine.
All right, it's six o'clock and I'd like to call the meetings at order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. Board meetings are generally held on the third Tuesday of the month. I think this is an exception this month. The Board of Education is a body of school districts or district residents elected by the community in charge with conducting school-related business. The meetings are conducted under the open meeting law but are not open forums for the community. With that being said, visitors to these meetings are to conduct themselves properly and with respect to any other individuals at the meeting. The Board of Education reserves the right to remove any individual for impromptu display of behavior or inappropriate language. The Board of Education will have a period of time devoted to visitor requests, following any board presentations and the approval of minutes shortly after the opening of the meeting. Individuals wishing to address the Board will be permitted to speak up to three minutes. A total of thirty minutes may be allowed for public comment. And when we get to the bad time, we'll go through the rest of this. So, tonight, we are going to be starting off with presentations. I think we have CIDGA, Capital Project Update, guys, what do you have for us?
Good evening. I think most of you went on the walkthrough. We're able to see the progress where we're at in different areas. Let's start with the budget. We're still in the same spot. We're in good shape with overall budget. We are, at this point, sixty-two percent of the way through billing and progress, but only twenty-five percent of the way through your construction contingency. So, we're in good shape. No safety incidents today, which is good. No quality issues, really. So, things are tracking well. We're still obviously dealing with a lot of the supply chain stuff, but seem to be managing our way through that with at least modest success. Just a quick status by some of the areas. We did walk through, we looked at the bus loop entrance. Which is ready for use. The main office entrance is about, well, it's ready for use as an exit. We've got a little bit more work. We've got some material coming in next week. It'll take about a week to get in to make that functional, the main entrance up front. And then, we also took a walk through Area B, which is currently work in progress. You were able to see that. It seems to be going pretty quickly. And then, we've got a little bit of work left at the bus garage. Got one, a set of trench drains that'll get done next week. There's one that's just tearing up right now. That's about it, unless there's any other status updates you can think of.
No, we're still tracking start. Well, as you can see, walking in here, we've already started.
Some of the removals.
Removals and trying to mitigate any unforeseen's. But, coming March first, we're gonna be putting up a temporary wall, splitting the hallway down where 118, 120 is, heading all the way around in front of the auditorium, right out the doors, splitting everything in half. And, we're gonna start ripping out the front of the building. We need to definitely start at March first because just your terrazzo alone is, has to start by the middle of July in order to be able to complete the terrazzo over here. So, everything else has to be done minus the terrazzo for the middle of July.
So, you can see back again in the elementary cafeteria, there's a big section of terrazzo that'll go in this summer as well. The patching, there are some doorways and things going on, is that gonna happen?
We're hoping within the next two to three weeks, we're gonna start with all the missing base and patching in the doorways, getting that done ahead of time. Just leaving everything at the cafeteria for last, which will be over the summer.
Just based on the size of the area, it's too disruptive to try to do that during a school year, so we're gonna accomplish that bigger area of terrazzo in the cafeteria this summer.
Do you have that terrazzo in your warehouse somewhere?
Do we know? Does the flooring contractor?
It's a, it's a precast, so they're making it right now.
They're making it right now.
We finally got the approval on the colors and what was close, so now it takes time to make it. So, it'll be here when it's done and ready to come.
They don't come raw materials? It's actually trialed, trialed into place?
Okay, so the base is poured and brought out in sections? So, anything that's vertical, we brought out and placed?
Yep.
But, anything that's on the floor gets poured? It's an epoxy resin and that gets poured in the water? So, it's brought out like that?
And then browned and grinded and grinded. There's a multi-step process to grinding that?
Well, the smell is pretty noxious, right? Like, it's pretty, it's pretty bad.
On the sensitious, it's not too bad. On the epoxy stuff, yeah, it's definitely...
So, we wouldn't want to be, yeah, well, in session.
That's why we're pushing that floor to finish during the summer.
Right.
That's about it for...
Just the windows, we're planning on starting those throughout the building here, starting March first.
Okay, and it says bus garage is, March, or February first is the bus garage will be completed? And it seems like the bathrooms and the break room are still...
They're closed. I think there's some paintwork that has to happen in there. Like I said, there's one trench drain, they finished one. It was tearing out today, saw that, and there's one more on the next day.
We actually got two done, and then they'll jump over to the third one, the last one.
Okay.
Are the windows in? Because I know that's a big, anybody's having trouble getting windows. I mean, are those ready to be put in March first?
We're not starting until March first.
So, you got a month and a half, month and a week to get them?
Again, if you remember a few weeks back when we had the meeting outside to look at the different colors, we were pushing to get those selections made so we could get that process going, because you're correct. Window Systems went from before, when this project, prior to this project, they'd be typically a twelve-week item, and they've gone to a sixteen-to-twenty week item now.
Right.
So, that's again why we did push for a few months back to get that whole process rolling. A couple of quick pics of the entries in the stage area.
Yeah, that's your elementary school main entrance now. It's a little later, yes. There's your catwalk here in the auditorium. That's all your new rigging that was put in place for all your curtains, lights, everything else. And there's your cafeteria at the elementary school.
The acoustical clouds in.
Wall panels. It's just about, it's there, other than the terrazzo, really.
I think that feedback's been pretty positive on the acoustic treatment in there, making a real impact. Finally, just a shot of that entry before.
Yep. This, all this area will have to be done in the summer because it's a material that can't do it in the winter. But, highly safe and ready to go. And this window over here was put in last week.
It wasn't the coldest day to put it in, but it was pretty cold.
But, it's in and...
It is, looks nice.
Tough to live when she wants to start using it.
So, we've been sending monthly reports as well. I just wanted to get your feedback and make sure those are getting through and that if there's any questions or any format or any issues that you've not seen addressed that you want addressed, just to make sure that we're getting you the information that you want to need.
I think the work on the suites have happened pretty quickly. I'm surprised to see how fast those went up. I see some reconfiguration that maybe has changed with some of the placements of teachers in the building. I see the CSE office is still in the same location. It's still centralized, so we're not gonna have to walk down to the other end of the school district to have those meetings, so that's nice, I think. And it doesn't look like there's a great deal of displacement with teachers in the building right now. It seems like there's some doubling up. Don't feel like there's anybody walking around with a cart at this point in time in either buildings. But flexibility, again, is needed when we're gonna start this, because this is gonna have an impact on our functionality here when we shut this down.
Yeah, we will maintain, like Mike said, that separation. We will be building that temporary wall that'll split that corridor to keep that safe separation between workers and students.
Matt, your office is gonna be relocated here. The counselors will be over in the...
Library.
The library?
Some offices over there where they'll be, because they'll be in the scheduling season, so they'll have their own private offices. J.C. and I and Heather Gaitman, Officer Alahanza will be in this room.
Okay, so, you know, come March, April, May, we may be back in the cafeteria having our board meetings. Now it's Matt's turn to have this as his main office.
It's interesting, and I mean, we, you know, along with some of the supply chain challenges we've had, you know, you see the labor challenges, getting people to show up, getting enough people to show up. But, the difference between when the weather's nice and they're working on a lot of other projects versus, you know, you look at 118 and how quickly that came together. That's what happens when you can try to move some work into the winter period. You have plenty of labor to be able to get it in. of labor to be able to get in there, knockout work a lot quicker than when you're fighting with every other district for, for labor. So, again, Mike and A.J. have been working hard to try to open up areas with, you know, with help, with everyone here that, you know, try to get in and get a jump on areas ahead of, you know, when we're gonna be competing against everyone else for labor this, this summer. So, again, we'll just continue that effort moving forward. Again, if there's any questions. We've got the bid out currently for that corner.
It's part of my report.
Okay.
Yep.
So, those bids are due on the ninth. And I think we're in pretty good shape contingency-wise to be able to afford that. We'll see. You know, we've had twenty percent material price increases over the last twelve months, but I think we'll still be within our range to be able to accomplish that work.
Any questions, guys? Well, gentlemen, thanks again.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a great evening.
All right.
Ms. Leicher, are you ready?
What do you think?
All right.
Okay. For those of you who don't know me, and I think I've had most of your students or your kids so far, right? Not Mrs.?
Not yet.
Almost.
Not yet.
I'm not ready to let them go.
Well, Mrs. Leicher, I, this is a person like her. I've taught math here for, this is my twenty-first year, and I'm here to present about our math team. And I've run that for the last, this is the eighth year that we've had a math team of teachers. And this year, we decided to expand the math team and include grades seven and eight. So, it's, it's usually been UPK through six. And when I was in the elementary building, sixth grade is over there, that's when it started. So, I've been doing that for seven years with UPK to six, and now we're expanding it to include grade seven and eight this year. What we did at the end of last year was we got together with our teachers and created a math vision for our team. And that's here. I'm not gonna read it to you, but you can definitely read it if you'd like. And that, that was with our seventh and eighth grade teachers, and then what we did was, actually, we drafted maybe like, everybody drafted a vision. And then, this year, at the beginning of the school year, we had a superintendent day in September, and we got together with all UPK through eight teachers on the math team, and we kind of went through all of the visions that we, we looked at, we created as a six, seven, eight, and we picked one, we voted on one that we, we liked. So, this is the vision that we chose for our math team. So, the elementary school goals for this year are, we, we get together, and the good thing about the math team of teachers is we have time to talk. We have time to discuss data. We have time to discuss our students and see what works best for our students. And it's just nice because we, we don't get that time very often, so it's really nice to have that, that those, we meet two times a year this year with elementary school, two times with the middle high school, and then two times a UPK eight altogether. But, the elementary school goals this year, we worked on at our first meeting, we're kind of focusing on spiral learning, bringing back the old all the time, keeping the kids' memories, like, keep bringing back those old standards that we learned in September now, closing gaps. At the end of last year, we did a gap analysis where we went through all of our standards, and we were able to identify which standards were not taught at each grade level and which standards needed more practice. So, we identified that, and then this year, those teachers who have those current students are now able to address those gaps that we have. Fluency, always, we wanna build fluency, but not just fact fluency, fluency in general. So, that means, that could be like, for me, I teach equations in sixth grade. I want them to be fluent with solving equations. So, yes, we wanna build fact fluency, but that, ultimately, we need that in order to build fluency with everything else. Word problems, we want our kids to become word problem solvers, rigorous word problem solvers. And then, we're working on assessment writing. And we want our assessment writing to be, to include our next-gen terms and verbs, so that our kids are familiar with those terms and verbs when they, when it comes time for state testing. So, those are our goals, that's what we're working on. I included some pictures of the kids in action. So, each slide is, this is UPK. I asked our UPK through eight teachers to share kids in action doing math. So, this was UPK, and they're working on developing number sense here, so that's kind of fun. Kindergarten math in action, these kinders are solving math mysteries, word problems, and doing some other activities with math with the cup building. Let's see, first grade. Grade one, these guys are working on daily math word problems and racket math in my, in their racket math groups. Fact fluency building with flashcards and, and flat fact fluency exercises, Jenga. Grade two, they're playing some splat games. They're building their fact fluency here. These are regular, just basic flashcards, and I guess they're addition and subtraction, but then they get more difficult on the back, so they're trying to challenge them a little bit. Grade three, multiplication, division, fact families, arrays, some math games. This is grade four. Grade four, they're working on building area models to solve math word problems. Grade five, lots of different games in Mrs. Hammer. Mrs. Hammer calls this, oh, she called it something, Mrs. Hammer's, engaging math games in Mrs. Hammer's class. There's flashcard Friday that they do that the kids actually absolutely love, and then they have these thirty wonderful math activities that they work on. Elementary RTI math in action. And this brings me to the middle school goals. So, we really just focused this year for middle school since it's our first year. We focus on spiral learning. I go to these math cohorts at Gen C Valley Bosse's, and I work with Pete Green, and he's wonderful, and I take a lot of what he teaches us there and bring it back here to OJ to help our teachers learn things that they can use with their kids. So, one of the things we're focusing on this year is retrieval practice. And that's just, instead of always, teachers always providing information to students, it's getting information out of students. So, it's really taking, going back, and it's, it's just like spiral learning, but it's going back and retrieving, seeing what the students can recall from memory rather than reviewing the information first. So, you kind of, kids kind of struggle a little bit with it, because you really, actually you want the kids to struggle a little bit with it. So, we do that through these, these strategies, brain dumps. So, I've done them a couple times with my kids. I'll show you a picture. Brain dumps are where you kind of, you teach the kids something, and then maybe a day later, a week later, a month later, you ask them about that topic, and they dump everything they know about that topic. So, for example, I think this was factors, factor rainbows, multiples. I, we had did, we had done a lesson, and so they just were dumping everything they knew onto a whiteboard about factors. And then, it's no assessing, so like, there's no grades attached to it. You're just trying to see if the kids can recall information a day later, and then you do it again, a week later, and then you do it again, a month later, and you keep doing it, so that we don't have our kid, we, we avoid having the kids lose that, that thought. So, and we also have these big basket questions, so that's fun. The kids love them. I call them barbecue. So, I have this basket in my room, and the kids actually develop the questions. So, they come up with the word problems. Sometimes the word problems are really awesome, like, well-thought-out word problems. Some, some kids, they just can, they can only come up with, like, if we're doing conversions, they can only come up with, I don't know, ten meters equals length centimeters. That's what their problem is. But, every kid can do it, and that's what's great about it, is that you kind of leave it open to whatever they wanna come up with, and you see all these different types of questions. So, the kids actually pick a, pick a question out of the basket, it's like a barbecue, I call it, and then we read it. Everybody solves it, and I give them two minutes. They solve it, and then the kids come up to the board, they dump all the, all of their answers or whatever, however they solved it on the board, we go over it. No assessment attached, no, like, they, they don't get graded on it, nothing like that. But, that's what I, I actually went over with the middle school team, and that's our goal, is to bring into more of that spiral learning and the retrieval process into our classes. So, grade eight did it. I'm glad that they're, I challenged them to go ahead and try it in their classrooms. They did it with slope. They had to give, they gave the kids one of these papers. They wrote as much as they could, as they, they could remember about slope. And then, they traded papers, and the kids added more information, whatever they didn't see on there. And then, they went over it cumulatively as a class. Grade nine did a similar project here. The kids wrote it on paper, the teacher then collectively put it up on the board. So, those are called brain dumps. Barbecue, flashcards you can use, you can use quizzes, the games, the cahoots, anything to have kids recall the information. So, ultimately, math team is really a team of teachers that we're just trying to get our kids to be more successful. We do analyze data. We use the iReady in elementary, and we use Star here. Right now, we're in, in the middle of our winter benchmarks, so we don't really have the data quite yet from September to now, but we take a look at that usually at our math teams. So, I mean, it's a great time to get together, discuss what we can do to further enhance the math learning of our students. So, yeah. You have any questions for me?
Yeah, so, Kristin, for resources, what resources are you pulling from programs or what's your, what's your go-to? K six or K four?
So, my, like, every teacher is different. I, I typically use the modules, but I don't use them exclusively. So, you have to know, I supplement, I use iExcel. A lot of our teachers use iExcel to supplement, iReady, the assessments and the lessons there. Freckle, we use Freckle for targeted skill practice. In the elementary school, they use Extra Math. Fact Monster, that's just a website. Right now, our grades three and four are piloting Reflex, which is more of a fact fluency. Pair Deck. So, those are some of the, I think you guys can add more to.
We do a Ready Math curriculum assessment with a module. So, what Kristin was talking about was the gap analysis. They took their priority standards for each grade level, then they went through and said, who's teaching what and what's the resource. And so, we're taking those resources, making sure all those standards are being addressed. They're talking about the vocabulary, so some vocabulary is different in Ready Math, slightly different than the modules. We're doing a combination so that it's going to be, fits, fits the needs of our students. Our students like the Ready Math because it's more kid-friendly than the modules. It doesn't, it's a little bit more cut and dry for them. So, they're making sure that they're finding all of those gaps and bridging them depending on the resource. But, we're also working with Bosse's and writing our own assessments, and that's really kind of empowering our teachers to write some of their own lessons and kind of taking some of those resources, taking the best of each one, and creating a, the unit for the, the topic.
That's pretty challenging, isn't it, Connie?
The whole thing is, this, this.
Right? So, like, there's some, some school districts access programs that are kind of spiral the nature, and, and, and then a lot of that work is done for you, where this is, you're looking at a lot of different resources.
Well, one of the things that, since I came here, we have to find, because you're right, there are box resources, but it has to be something that fits the needs of our Oakfield kids and our Oakfield teachers. And that's why things like the gap analysis that math team does, so we see where the needs are. We know, you know, what curriculum resources are out there that are rated as highly effective. They align more closely to the new next-gen standards, because that's that whole shift that.
It's a huge shift.
Even with COVID, it's still happening. And so, we are very forward-thinking. Common Core isn't really what they're looking at or doing anymore. We're lining everything with next-gen, and so it's become that combination. We let our teachers drive a lot of this, looking at the curriculum, what are you using, what's working, what's not? Like Kristin said, looking at the data. Like, she'll ask me, Connie, can I have the data? I wanna bring it to the team. And the team analyzes it, okay, let's look at, now, well, now it's pre-K eight. Again, it used to be just through six, but we're the trends in the district, right? What do we wanna work on as a district, because we're seeing this need for support?
So, when you use that, like, the iReady assessment?
And the Star for six, seven, eight.
So, that's six, seven, eight. Does that help to determine RTI services?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. So, then, like, when you do RTI in math, how often is that occurring during the week?
So, it, it's typically every other day. Some kids have it every day for twenty minutes.
And that would be tier three, that you'd be?
What's that?
That'd be a tier three?
Uh, tier two.
Tier two would be every day?
It's just because of the needs of the kids.
Twenty minutes every day, or forty minutes every other.
Okay.
So, at the elementary, there's a built-in RTI time for each grade level that's forty minutes, and depending on the needs of the kids, they can either go every day or every other day. The tier two, tier three is more what level of support they're receiving, because we give more than enough actual time for intervention to be, you know, and I'm sure, Justin, you know this language, but for tier two and tier three, there's like a just, they'll say you need to meet frequently, so every other day, every day, and the duration, how much time you're meeting for, and how many kids are in the group. That's kind of how they classify it. We are fortunate in this district, actually, in both buildings, because we have office hours at the middle school where we can pull kids for RTI, and we have built-in RTI time in the elementary school. So, the actual frequency, kids are getting more.
More than what they're.
At tier two in this school than they get at tier three in a lot of other schools.
Well, some of the eighth grades notoriously tough to get RTI to, because you've gotta really get into that schedule. Now, what resources would you be using during RTI? How does that differ then from your regular instruction?
It depends. We're, I mean, at the elementary, we're a little bit further ahead with some of that, just because we're just newly having a real intervention team at the middle school level. So, we're, at this level, they've been doing a little bit at middle high, like Progress Math, the Sadler program. We do have the, like Kristin mentioned, we have Freckle, we have some programs that are tight.
And that aligns directly with the Star.
Yep.
Okay.
So, when our kids take the Star, it typically then aligns with Freckle, which puts them like at different levels in Freckle. It's kind of neat how that works. So, for example, one of my standards is expressions and equations, or, you know, one of my strands. So, that, it depends on how well they score on the Star, that'll put them where they need to be on Freckle. Kind of neat how that works.
Have you ever investigated programs for math and gone out there?
That's definitely something.
Because it's, what you guys are talking about is extraordinarily hard to synthesize all of this stuff.
But, our teachers actually drove that model. They didn't want to be married to one program versus another. They like having the ability to change and, and kind of adapt to what the kids are doing. And every year, your group changes. So, some years, you might be, be meeting more towards the modules, other years, your levels might say we need more of the, the Reflex or whatever. I don't believe until all the next-gen standards are really out and you get through the next year of COVID, we're gonna see some solid pushes to developing better curriculum programs. You're not gonna find a perfect curriculum. We had the same struggles with our reading adventure, and now we're trying to focus on our math. Right now, our teachers really like the resources that they do have, and some of the resources that we purchased for summer school, our interventionists are really finding a need for. And Sue Gilbert and Mary just sent us an information about bridges that we're looking into as an intervention strictly for our tier two and tier three for math. So, we're still gonna explore the next two years, we're gonna be talking about this, because there's not one curriculum right now that meets the needs of my building. And so, it is piecemeal by design, that's what they asked for, but we are constantly reviewing and paying attention, sending teachers to, you know, different meetings and cohorts to give back what our other schools are doing, and I'm hoping that next year, with the COVID stuff kind of subsiding and people are more comfortable, we can go back to teachers going to other districts and exploring resources and watching each other teach and having teachers come to us and get back into that, because that's when we can really start making decisions on which. because that's when we can really start making decisions on which programs to pilot.
Yeah, cause I think it, I think it's just you want to know exactly what you're doing, how it connects from one grade level to another.
Yeah, it's tough for teachers in elementary school because they're not, um, experts in math, like, you know, I teach just math, do you know what I mean? They're experts in everything, so it's really, it's hard to, to just, do you know, do you know what I'm trying to say?
I get, they're, they're more generalist. I, I, I get what you're saying.
Right, yeah, so, I mean, I get what you're saying. I, I have never actually here in twenty-one years, ever had a curriculum, like other than.
Which is kind of scary, actually. That's, that's frightening for me to hear, actually.
It's crazy, but I just used the O-five standards and then I, you know, it just, I've used all of those and came up with all of my own stuff, like based off of those. So I've always developed my own lessons, my own, ever, forever since I started here. And now I just, I took the modules when they came out and of course, I didn't love the modules, they're crazy. So I just adapted, I, I, I modified, I took what was important and I taught my kids that right now is you prioritize and so you, you want to look at your priority standards and you want to really hit those standards hard, right? I mean, the other stuff is supporting, so.
No, I did.
I mean, I've never had, I've never had anything here in twenty-one years to follow.
Which is tough.
I mean, it's, it's, it's worked. I mean, I, I kind of like the freedom of, honestly, I, I like the freedom of, of, of having that choice, um, and I, I like, I, I do have a lot of supplements that I use and I, I think I've been pretty successful, I'm not trying to toot my own horn, but over the years, math, sixth grade math has been pretty successful and so, I mean, I really haven't had an issue.
Yeah, we have hardware back in the day, um, before all the modules came out and modules came out, they have everybody switch. The elementary teachers don't love the modules, so trying to find something that they're comfortable teaching, that the kids are engaged with, um, and finding a blend of, you know, paper pencil practice where you have games and, and interactive.
Stations.
And then you still have some of the technology stuff there supporting.
Yeah, we do a lot of stations in my room, like I do stations, I'll do tech time, I'll do fluency games and activities, paper practice, they're still getting tons of practice. Thankfully, I have eighty minutes, so that helps, but.
So math is going to be a conversation we have a lot in the next few years.
But I hear a lot of good things, the consistency of language, the verbiage that you're using. I think the consistency is what's so important to me and I think when, when we're consistent, we can have a, 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 something that we can agree upon, right?
Well, and I, I want to verify that each team has decided, so that is also something that's very important to us as a district too, that if my first grade teachers are teaching a math lesson, they're all using the same resources. So even though it does sound a little bit more chaotic from the outsider coming in, they are all designing everything, they're meeting together, next week, first grade is meeting, they're going through the next round of units, what lessons, what resources. So they're doing a lot of that and we're doing that all throughout the building. So even though there's not one peer-to-year curriculum, they are very collaborative and exploring a lot of things.
And I know that because I have a rep from each grade level that I meet with and they are so good about communicating back to their grade levels down there. It's, it's, it's really amazing, I mean, they're just, they're great teachers, so.
They love those days.
Yeah, your photos look, they look great. Uh, I love the hands-on approach and I love that you're meeting, um, you know, the needs of all different learning styles and types, but that hands-on, learning through play, um, you can just see that in your photos and I'm a firm believer that children learn best when they're having fun and they think that they're playing, but we all know that there's so much more happening.
Even in sixth grade, eleven and twelve year olds love to have hands-on activities. Today I had Conversation Hearts, they were ordering integers with Conversation Hearts, you know, the numbers were on there, but that's what they like to do. They like that stuff, it's intriguing, it's engaging, they like that, so.
It's fun, for sure.
Yeah. Anything else?
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thanks Kristin, thank you so much.
Mr. Peterson, uh, you're up next and I think you've got a new course, uh, that's for discussion here.
We do, so Mr. Loopold has came, uh, came to me and offered an opportunity to teach an elective course, um, he's going to call it Anatomy One and Two. And the idea behind Anatomy One and Two is to offer a course selection that's, that's not another college level course or upper level course or an AP course, but a course that's for the masses, that kids could take as a science elective and give them some, some basic knowledge about, you know, Anatomy One and Anatomy Two, another elective, um, so we've given Mr. Loopold green light to run that, we would actually start it next year. Give it one opposite of our MST course, oh, I'm sorry, forensic science course and our life science course.
Does something not get taught or how do you, how do you work that into the schedule? Or a teacher to pick up?
Offer it this year to our students as they start scheduling, um, and then generate, see what the interest generated is. He's had conversation with kids and he thinks that there could be about fifteen kids or so, or a year, when we offer it every other year, they're interested in it. It's just another choice, um, within the science department. So we wouldn't eliminate a course, but we always look at the numbers based on scheduling and if there isn't enough interest, we don't run it in that given year. Just by this one, eleven, and every other year basis.
The prerequisites didn't seem terrible, it was two science classes prior to that and then the cost of the program seemed pretty minimal, it was like five, five hundred? Five hundred, I think.
Just the basic supplies was not going to break the budget.
So are you looking more so for this to be like a junior and senior type of class? If there's two science courses already needed for it?
Three grad, three credits to graduate, a lot of students will go science living right, this would be a third option, it would take Anatomy One and Two, we'd give those two half credits and it would be the third science class.
Oh, that'd be like an AP class, yeah.
Not be like an AP class, cause we have some AP offerings, we offer AP physics, AP bio, um, AP chemistry, this would be something more for the general population.
So Justin, the state requires three years of science. And that third year, some of our, it's hard in smaller schools because you have those regions that you must offer, but some of our kids that, that might not be where they're going to find the most success, this is another offering for a science class, they can get that third year that's required for graduation, but to be on a level that they're learning something important, right? Anatomy, I mean, we all should know about the anatomy of human beings, so it's relatively higher interest, but it's not tied to a region's exam, it's, it's at a level, not that it's not rigorous, but it's a level that our kids can, they can reach success in this class where they might really, really struggle if they had to take a regions for a third year science.
So the accessibility?
Yeah.
To pick up that credit.
Right, keep educating the science.
Kids that are going off to college, maybe some are, but it could appeal to the masses in that area.
A lot of those kids in that junior, senior, if they're inclined to have a health-related profession, this is a good exposure to give. And I tell you what, that's one of the hardest classes when you get into college and you spend, you're like, wow, it would be nice to have a little bit extra exposure, but not at an AP level in, in, you know, if this, because that is, that is a tough, that is a tough get, so good for that direction.
Was this something that you approached him with or does Mr.?
Mr. Loopold had came to me a couple of years ago and he was looking to expand the science options and I said, why don't you take a look at what you think the need is, talk to some of the kids that you run into, talk with your department, and this is one that he came to me with.
Oh, that's cool. Good for him. You have other questions, guys? Sounds, sounds good.
Can you give Matt the, the go-ahead to make that an option for next school year?
I think.
Part of scheduling?
I, I was. Yeah, right?
I would say so.
Add to the course offerings and we're going to start meeting with kids, maybe within the next week or so and that'll be one of the options.
Great, thanks, Mr. Peterson. Okay, uh, and to the minutes, uh, be it resolved at the minutes of the meeting, um, for December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, be approved?
So moved.
Can I get a?
A second, sorry, Justin.
Uh, all, haha, that's okay, we're on the, on the drive. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, so moved. Visitors' requests, uh, let's see here, am I talking, Mrs. Cole or Mrs. Fisher right here, are you guys in sync?
She's, she's training tonight, she's.
Sorry, what? Did you want to, are you just here for the board? Okay, she's the only other one I saw come in, so there was none.
There's no visitors here tonight?
I mean, you can make something up. Okay.
Please no, Kristin, I like when you.
Please do, Kristin. What's on your mind today?
No, no, please no. No, this is, we don't have the time. All right, um, uh, approval of warrants, be it resolved that after an audit of the bills, payment of warrants and internal claims, uh, reports be approved, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Under the treasurer's reports, uh, let's see here. Uh, be it, uh, resolved that the treasurer's reports for September twenty, twenty-one be approved? Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, passes. Okay, Dan, we're on to our third reading here of Policy fifteen-ten, regular board meetings and rules.
Yeah, so the final edits per last board meeting have been amended in here, so if you take a look, um, under the public comment period, the second paragraph, uh, the board will designate a specific proportion of the meeting agenda for public comment for a period of up to thirty minutes. The public is permitted to discuss topics of a general nature, concern, issue, or theme and may not identify or address specific individuals. The board may request speakers identify themselves. And here's the, here's the change, at the board president's discretion, individuals may be kept up to a three-minute time limit. Written comments may be directed to the board. So I believe that, you know, the edits and the comments that you've had over the last two months, um, fulfill this policy and, uh, it's up for approval unless there's any other questions.
Does that reflect what you were thinking, uh, Matt, from the last one? Dan, does that sound all right?
Looks good to me.
Maria, Jeff?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else, Jeff, you would like to add?
No.
No, I think it's a good mechanism to have in place, um, during these strange times. So I guess we can take a vote. Be it resolved, uh, that Policy fifteen-ten, uh, regarding regular board meetings and rules, uh, be approved, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Uh, can I get a second? Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. On to reports, okay.
Do you want to go first or do you want to do the budget presentation? Do you want to give your update?
Sure, let me, if, if we can skip to, to my report because Christine is going to give her first round of our budget, which might take some time, so if I could just kind of jot down my list here real quick as, as she gets settled in. So, um, as DGA and SEI were, were speaking about the updates to the capital project, I want to let you know that we put out a new bid for the middle high school toilet rooms. For hopeful, we're hopeful that we will get some, um, requests for proposals that might have a better pricing on them. Um, as you are aware, at the beginning of our capital project, that was an alternate bid, so that bid was not locked in. Um, and really, right now, we have two options. We can renovate the current existing bathrooms or create brand-new bathrooms right at the corner of the four corners. I am absolutely one hundred percent in favor, um, in making sure that those bathrooms are at that corner. It's a lot more expensive, um, and so looking and going in and seeing the type of construction that they need, we're hopeful, as, as Pete mentioned, that there's enough contingency at the end of this project that we can facilitate that. I, I would be very disappointed, not only in myself, but I would, I would just be upset if we're renovating bathrooms and not making them brand-new. So we took an extra step in going out and just putting out a new RFP for those bathrooms alone to see what type of quote we could get out of, out of theirs. The original quote had some extra stuff in renovating the SRO office and where, um, the math specialist and the literacy specialist, we just focused in on that corner and those bathrooms. So, um, it doesn't hurt to go out for a bid, we'll see what we get, um, and hopeful, what is it, February ninth they're doing?
February ninth is the bid opening.
Right.
And then they're gonna, hopefully, we'll be able to approve, um, those bids that, depending on what comes back at the February fifteenth meeting.
And it's just for that project alone, so we're hopeful that maybe there's a local contractor that takes a look at it and puts in a bid and decides that, you know, they can do the work. Again, it doesn't hurt, but we're looking at upwards to three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for those bathrooms that were originally bid on as an alternate and we're hopeful that we could get better pricing on that. So, and maybe I shouldn't have said that on public record, but, um, that's, that's where we're at, so if you're wondering why the bid was out there, we're just going to test, test the waters and see what, what's out there.
So I mean, John, that would be, they'd be shifted to the, to where, to the?
They would be exactly in the corner where that TV is.
Like right when you walk in here?
Yes, we would knock out those walls, um, where that TV is and it would go over to the current boiler room.
Hitting corner from the auditorium.
Yes.
Towards the cafeteria, like that way?
So across from the gym doors.
There's only thing, like, I know it's been a while since I've gone to school here, but like, these bathrooms just never were used during the school day.
One right up here, no?
Yeah.
No, currently, these bathrooms out here are for staff, are for, for us, like district office. The middle school wing has those bathrooms that I'm currently talking about that I don't want to renovate.
Right.
And because, and faculty have a couple bathrooms that are going to be lost because we're redoing some of the office.
Faculty bathrooms.
So during the day, these brand-new bathrooms will be just for faculty because the, the old ones that are there right now would stay, so this would be the faculty bathroom during the school day and then at night, we would open them up for events.
So the new ones you want to build on the corner would be faculty bathrooms?
Correct.
And then we'd be renovating the old ones?
No, it's either or.
So these would be gone?
Where would the kids go to?
No.
These, these are going to be, these out here across from the auditorium are gone.
I'm sorry, I'm making this up.
Yes, oh, out of the auditorium, yes, these are gone.
That's why. So those are gone, the ones, the current ones are gone and you're want to put, you're wanting to put new ones in at the four corners.
Correct.
Where would the kids go to the bathroom?
They would go in the current ones that they have right now, in that other corner. By the entrance.
Yeah.
Okay.
By the guidance seat.
I thought that's what you were talking about, it's going to be remot.
That's one of the alternates in, that's if we can't get the new ones built, we would renovate the old ones. And the staff, the faculty is going to, are going to use these bathrooms during the day, what would they, if you didn't do this project, what would they be using during the day? Who's that, the faculty or the staff? That, that's our concern. So who's on first? Yeah.
Who's going where? Yeah, cause I don't.
So you want to build a staff bathroom as an old. Correct, yes.
We're losing these bathrooms and they're getting replaced, but they're going to put them on the door, on the corner there, so it's, it's convenient to the auditorium, um, and it's also convenient to, if you have something in the gym. After hours, but during the school day, students.
So they would have multiple stalls, yes, so they would, yes, for events. Currently, right now, for events, you're aware that we use the two out here and they're not.
Those are going to go away.
And those are, we're actually eliminating them with the new front entrance project here at the middle high school.
And the student bathrooms down by Mr. Walter's own room are in okay shape.
Yes.
Is it just these bathrooms you're asking about?
No.
No, no, we're talking about.
Student, I want to know where the kids are going to the bathroom. We're going to build three hundred thousand dollar bathroom for the teachers to go, where the kids go? Where are the kids going to the bathroom?
In the existing bathroom that they have.
But we're not gonna do anything, we're gonna let it, if we build a new one, we're gonna leave the old one just like it is.
Correct.
But the new ones,
But the new, but the old one's not in there.
It's,
The new ones are for the public use in after-school hours.
After-school hours, correct, but dur.
So you know what, Jeff, I think?
It's like, it's exactly what we're doing with the bathrooms that are across from the auditorium right now. We're just moving them.
Do you know what I think?
It's the same thing that happens with them now.
Yes.
Dan, I, I'm still picturing these ones here, like, open to anybody during the day. Because when I went here, it was open to anybody during the day. I remember Mr. Sisson having that being a special bathroom there.
Right.
I think it was just open to anybody that had to use the facility. And what you're saying now is, is this bathroom is really pretty much,
You have a key and it's locked.
Yes.
Students, it's not locked.
They use a community room for events, those people can use those.
It never was, so maybe that's, maybe, that's my frame of mind, is that this was just open to anybody that had a yearning. And now it seems like you have to have a special key, so that's our frame that we're getting confused. So, this is, has been now for a number of years, a staff bathroom, or faculty, however we want to say it. And now, we're saying that that's going to get shifted down to where the boiler room is currently, and we're not doing anything with children's bathrooms.
Correct.
Okay.
Because we're also losing the, the, the staff bathrooms down that middle school hallway
Okay.
because of the part of the new middle high school main office. So we are losing two, we are losing two bathrooms for the staff.
So what bathrooms, if you don't do this project, what bathrooms would the staff be using?
So, that, and, and again, that is our concern. And if we cannot do this project, which I said, no is not the answer. If we can't do this, then we're gonna have to take a look because the other option is to renovate the ones that we have.
Right here, right.
There's a cost to that, too.
Correct, and they're actually talking about moving them and renovating them. But, again, you don't have staff bathrooms if the kids are using it, and if you make them for staff, then the kids don't have a bathroom down that middle school hallway. So that's, that is why I am adamant that we get these new bathrooms done at the four corners, so I'll, I'll keep you posted. And, and part of that is obviously getting the best pricing and making sure that we've exhausted all avenues before we take a look at, at the cost. I'm hopeful that we have enough contingency in our budget at the end, that they don't run into major problems over here, that there's enough that we can afford those.
Sorry to make that higher than I needed to be, Brian, John.
No, I'll, I'll keep you posted on.
So when he talks about the twenty percent increase in supply costs, how, how is there the contingency available?
So, we started this project, when you start a fifteen-point-three million-dollar capital project, you usually have six, seven to eight percent of that in a quote-unquote savings because you're gonna run into unexpected costs, abatement costs, things like that, so change orders, you know. So, we started off with, you know, probably around eight hundred thousand dollars. When he talks about the remaining balance of, you know, five hundred, now they're gonna work over here. As long as we don't run into some major issue and don't use that money, when everything is all said and done and you're sitting there with three, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars left, we can do those bathrooms. That's what's, that's why it's an alternate, that it's not in the project, but that's going to be our first use of any monies left over in that contingency budget. And so, we're very cautious about doing change orders and we're hopeful, and you keep your fingers crossed, that when they start demoing over here, they don't run into unexpected, you know, issues, so.
Were there other things in that contingency line that you would hope to be able to do, or that you have to choose one over the other?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot, and part of the, the facilities committee, we are going to review all of the priority items that were not included in this project. I will mention to you that our building condition survey had over thirty million dollars' worth of work on this campus, and we're hitting, you know, the first half of it with the fifteen-point-three. So there's, there's a lot that, that was not in here that with this facilities committee, we'll have to discuss and address and see, moving forward, what we want to prioritize.
So, Jeff, what's the net cost of the cost to renovate the bathrooms that we're talking about versus drilling the new ones? Is it three hundred thousand in net cost, or is there savings from not renovating that would be applied?
Yeah, renovating is probably two hundred compared to a three fifty.
So you're looking at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of additional money?
Correct, yes.
Contingency monies to do that job.
Correct.
We have someone who would like to ask a question.
Can I ask a question now?
Sure.
I should have delayed this? So if you get rid of the bathrooms, which is already happening right here, and you don't get the, your new wish list bathroom that you want, where will all of the people go from the games, where, where do they go to the bathroom? Or the auditorium?
They will go to those current bathrooms, and there is a shift.
Well, you thought these were going away?
No.
The kid bathrooms?
Down the middle.
Down the middle school, yes.
Okay, that was my question.
Yes.
And they would be remodeled?
Correct.
If that happened?
Correct.
If it doesn't happen, those kid bathrooms are staying as is?
If we,
To get the new bathroom you don't renovate?
Correct.
Okay. And they're acceptable?
Yes. Well, they're green.
I remember, I remember what they look like.
When, when I say renovate, I would mean all new fixtures, tile, it, it, they would be completely re, you know, redone.
I was questioning, because I thought when you said before that maybe they,
The problem is, the problem is, is the construction part of it, and building, you know, the solid base foundation for the new ones, that's the cost of it. Renovating them is not, is not the issue. It's the actual construction and knocking down that wall, and because it's over the boiler room, they're gonna have to support all that. So it's the construction part of it that's, that's the concern. There's a lot more steel beams and, you know, stuff that we wouldn't have to if we just renovated the current bathrooms.
Gotcha.
Plus you'd have to add in all plumbing and, and all of that, so.
Right.
So speaking on that, I did send out an email to the facilities committee. We will schedule our first meeting next Thursday, February third, at six P.M. here in the community room. We have a good mix of board members, administrators. I have Jeff and Jordan on, on the team. We have a handful of teachers and some community members that were interested in being a part of it, so I believe there's a committee of sixteen. Currently, right now, we are setting up the agenda, we'll have introductions, and basically, we will talk financials. You know, give the, the state of the district to everybody. Current project work, where we stand as far as future financials and, and reserves. And then, we will discuss, and of course, SEI is involved in it, discuss our last bu- building condition survey. We'll prioritize some of the items, and then we will have discussion on what our mission and vision is, and where we want to go, and come up with a plan for the next five to seven years of the work that needs to be done and, and really try to outline where we want to go. There's some decisions that need to be made, you know, more so in a sense of, do we do, you know, some smaller capital projects in the next couple of years? Or do we, you know, build up, you know, our capital reserve and, you know, wait an extra year or two and get it all done in, in one big, one big project? So, we'll review all of the immediate needs and get some information, and I think, you know, meeting monthly, beginning in February, will give us a, a good idea of where we are and come up with a plan and spell some things out. The last thing I want to talk about is, of course, the, the masking update. So, I want to explain to the board and the community, and obviously, the board already knows. So obviously, last, last evening, there was a ruling that the state mask mandates in school was unconstitutional. It was illegal, it was unwarranted, and the governor had no authority to, to withhold it. And of course, with all of that stirred up the social media, the school communities, in regards to, there's no mandate anymore. Unfortunately, it's just not that simple. And so, I was on the phone for many hours last night with the area superintendents, our district superintendent, and really, we said, where, where do we go from here? We need to get something out to our community in, in regards to this. I will mention at that point, because of the ruling, that yes. At that time, there's a window there where the mask mandate no longer existed. So I could have very easily put out last night that, hey, when you come to school tomorrow, wear a mask or not. But in talking to the other superintendents and talking to some of my colleagues, you know, also in, in Erie County, we had a premonition that this wasn't gonna last very long, that unfortunately, the games are starting to be played. And we decided that we would basically all try to keep status quo because I knew at least by Thursday or Friday that we would end up going back to a, a mask mandate. And I would hate to see announcements and things going out to the community on one evening, yeah, tomorrow you don't have to wear one, and then, yeah, okay, Thursday you do, and Friday, oh, nope, and next week you do. So we decided that, using the NICE Ed's comment about school districts following and enforcing the mask mandate, that that was, that was the safe way to go. Again, knowing that, that there was gonna probably be a stay order, which there usually is, that was gonna continue on with this mask mandate. So, most of the school districts in Western New York, including the school districts around here, gave out the same message that we were going to enforce and continue on with the mask mandate. And I mentioned to, you know, our teachers and administrative team last night and this morning, that, you know, we didn't have the authority to do that. I did not have the authority to, you know, withhold somebody from not wearing a mask, so we just kind of went with it. I will tell you that, standing at the four corners this morning, ninety-nine percent of the kids that walked in the building had a mask on, and by one o'clock, ninety-nine percent of the kids didn't have a mask on. And I think it was an okay day, knowing that, you know, it just, this came out yesterday afternoon and late last night, and we just decided to kind of low-key it and not make it an issue here in the district. Well, as of this afternoon, in my parents' square message, our premonition was right. There is a stay order now that the mask mandate is back, and starting tomorrow, everybody needs to mask up. So, yesterday into today was really just going to be a lose-lose situation. School districts are on the news because they were kicking kids out and basically isolating them if they weren't wearing a mask. I know some school districts had some riots and parents were upset. I want to thank our community because we didn't have to endure any of that. I did spend most of my morning and afternoon on the phones, you know, answering emails, talking to the community. People were wondering why we weren't enforcing masks if kids weren't wearing them because we just didn't have the authority at that time to do so. Tomorrow, we do have the authority to, to enforce that. But, you know, it was a lose-lose situation, and I also did not want to throw out there that, you know, masks were optional because this is just gonna continue. I guarantee you, by next week, something else will change. Somebody else higher up will say, no, it's, it's, you know, it's not allowed to have this mandate. It's, it's just gonna go back and forth. But I think we took the, the high road here. Yes, kids were, by lunchtime, knowing that we weren't enforcing it, and most of them did not have their masks. But, at the end of the day, I thought it, you know, it went as smoothly as, as we could. And we're back to masks tomorrow for the stay order, so. I, I just, I want to thank the community because I do know that these are tough times, there's lots of perceptions out there, there's lots of political views, there's lots of, you know, personal, you know, personal takes on all of this. This is not easy for any of us, our teachers, our administrators, myself, we do not want to do this. This is not what education is, and we are stuck right in the middle of it. And so, I just, I just want to thank the community for their patience. And please, you know, call me, email me, you know, message me through Parents Square if you have a concern, but, you know, I'm right there with you. It's exhausting. You know, I didn't sleep last night, I'm trying to get emails out to staff, I know staff is wondering, you know, what do we do, what's going on? You know, the administrators, I was making phone calls at six o'clock this morning on my way to work to, you know, Matt and Lynn about we need to be on the same page and get the same information out to our staff. And it's, you know, you're not gonna please everybody. But I do think in the end, today went as, as best as possible. And, at least for a day, some kids didn't have to wear a mask. And I'm, they were happy.
Best day in two years, man.
Best day in three years, so. And again, we also need, as, as, as a, as a district, you know, need to remain, need, remain neutral. You know, mask or no mask, you know, my firm belief is that it should be a family, personal decision. So, you know, if and when, down the road, that this mask mandate is lifted, then we will announce that and, and let people make that personal choice on wearing one or not. But, this is the times that we live in, and we just have to react, unfortunately. But I am, I am proud of our teaching staff and our administrators and our, and our students and our community for today. And we'll get back to masking tomorrow.
I appreciate how you handled it today, John, I think, you know, sort of the, the relaxed position on that versus some of the districts that decided to take the hard-line stand. I, I, I feel like we've navigated this whole COVID thing, you know, whether those are coming directly from you or the community, I, I feel like you've navigated as well as a district could navigate it, including today. So I, I appreciate the way you handled that, and you'll see, we'll see if you have some challenges tomorrow.
And like I mentioned, our, our direction to, to the staff and the teachers, we're just, you know, focused in on teaching. I don't want to put teachers in a, in a position where they're yelling and screaming at kids and then parents are upset, and, you know, the teachers don't need to be in the middle of this, you know, and, and really, it was just let the kids come in, sit down, and just teach. And if they start talking about it, well, just let's get back to my lesson and learn something, you know, type of deal. I just don't want teachers feeling the need that they have to sit there and police and be a part of this and then have parents coming after them of, you can't tell my kid that, you know, they have to wear, it just, it's, it is. It's an absolute nightmare in a circus, and I'll say it again, you know, I hear the music every day. It's, it's just, and we're, like I said, it's, it's awful and we're stuck right in the middle of it. So, you know, I do appreciate everybody's, you know, cooperation, and again, I think this is just only in the beginning, so. But beginning tomorrow, like I said, a stay order was approved, so we do have to revert back to what the procedures and protocols were before the ruling. So we'll react to our mask mandate in all school districts in the area, so we'll be back to the mask mandate come tomorrow morning.
It just makes for a struggle, that's all, it's just really hard for one day to have kids, you have to wear a mask today and then tomorrow you don't, and for us not to be able, or anybody, to explain why is frustrating to me. From, from my viewpoint in the classroom, I've been saying for the last two years, I can see your nose, Jeffy, and that means that, you know, that's, you know, like, but I, and I love your nose, Jeff.
Thanks, buddy.
I really do. And that's where I've been at, and as a teacher, that's got old, you know, and then, but that's, that's, that's not Mr. Stabell's rules. It's not the state's rules, like them or not. And then to turn a switch off today and then not be the rule, it's gotta be hard for kids to, 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 to process. And I'm not saying what we did here was wrong, I actually, I, the more I sit here and, and, and listen and think about it, it's the right move. But then to turn it back on again tomorrow is frustrating, and it's gonna be really hard in this building to make it happen again.
I think it's difficult for adults to process, I mean, none of it really makes any sense, so this just goes without it, so.
Well, it's like, like tomorrow, you know, for, you know, I, I look to my teachers to help me understand things, right? It's kind of your job, and I don't know how to do it tomorrow, other than saying it's the rule. And it stinks, and I'm frustrated with it, and I'm not just saying that to, 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 to relate or connect with anybody out there. It's how I feel right now, and I don't know how to do it differently. I, I, I really don't, so I, I,
So some, some of the news reports I see, John, I know I asked you this earlier, say that the mandate ends at the end of the month anyway, and maybe in February, you know, we'll be free of the masks again, but your, your people that are in the know are saying it will be renewed. This isn't going away.
I don't know. There, there were some comments right before the board meeting that the, that the stay order was effective through Friday. I, I,
Seems worth it?
I, I, I can't tell you, like I said, and unfortunately, when this stuff comes out, it, it's at the worst possible times. You know, something will come out Sunday night, I, I can see it. Um, you know, something will come out Sunday night, I, I can see it, or, or Friday night. Um, all, and that's, that's the struggle that we all have, is that we're so reactive to everything right now, instead of being pre, you know, proactive. It's very frustrating, and, um, we just, we just do, do the best we can. Um, so, I, I, like I said, I would not be surprised if by Friday we hear something different. So, it's just the games that people play and the politics, and we're stuck right in the middle of it. Um, I don't know if anybody else has anything to, to share?
About that or about good news?
No, good news. Oh, freedom.
Any good news, any?
Yeah, I, two bits of good news, so we're gonna like shift the focus here. Um, you'll find for consideration tonight, uh, in your board packets, approval for a substitute, um, Lucas Krainer. He comes to us, if you remember, in the fall, we were able to get through the Teacher Emergent Fellowship Program, two days a week, a consistent substitute in Lynn's building that is actually in the teacher program. We really had requested for this school and weren't able to get one in the fall. Now it's spring, Lynn has her fellow back again for two days a week, and we have a fellow that's, this is this Lucas, um, who will be here if you approve him this evening. Every Tuesday and Thursday, he goes to SUNY Geneseeo. He is, um, seeking his Math 712 certification, and he went through the same process, you know, the interview, he gets his, um, PD classes through Monroe 2. We pay him, and then at the end of the year, I submit paperwork, and we get our BOSI's reimbursement rate back for that sort of capable. So he came in today to meet people, to pick up his paperwork. We had him in to see John. Um, Wendy met him this morning, gave him a tour of the building, and upon consideration, if you approve him tonight, he will start as a substitute Thursday, and Heather Gaten already has a job for him. So that is, I'm just excited, so hopefully we can continue that partnership, um, that we started to build with that, like the pipeline that we always talk about. Um, other, just real quick news, and it kind of ties into some of the things Kristin was talking about. You allowed us to hire a math and a literacy interventionist to make this middle school, high school kind of intervention team. Matt and I just recently, since we're about halfway through the year, um, met one-on-one with each interventionist, how's it going, you know, what areas can we improve on, what does your data look like? And we were absolutely tickled, pink, um, such great feedback, people happy to have a team, we're seeing good, solid data, our kids are making progress, um, a lot of great suggestions they had, so Matt and I are talking about how we can shift the schedule next year, do some things a little bit differently. Um, it was just really, really exciting for the, to us to sit and talk to these interventionists and see what they're doing, and know that our kids are getting some good, solid support, and we're seeing the growth, we're moving them forward. Especially in this COVID time, we know that there's a lot of gaps, so we even have kids that you might not normally see needing the support, but you just kind of miss something. Maybe they had quarantine three times last year, and our interventionists are getting those kids in and out. They're getting them in, they're hitting them hard, they progress monitor, look, you're good to go, out you go. So that's, that's been really exciting for us to see happening. You know, we've had that going for years, well, since I've been here with Lynn's building, it's been a little bit more established, but with you allowing us to hire these two individuals and this creative scheduling.
I was really moved by some of the data and how they presented the data and what we can do with it, it was really, pretty amazing.
So those are two really good things I wanted to share.
My turn, I'll talk about students of what I don't, I won't present this month the way I did last time, but give you some snapshots at the second market period end, it's really looking good. I think we were at eighty-six percent improvement in the reduction in failed courses after the first market period. We are trending to exceed that or, or, or at least match it, so that's really, really, um, good news, but, um, the market period hasn't ended yet, I don't want to jinx it, but we were at two hundred and twenty-six failed courses, uh, last year. We're already under forty, we still have four days left.
Wow, that's amazing.
Four days left to go?
Well, we're gonna have Saturday again, so the grades do officially close Friday, but the reality is we have a lot of teachers who are willing to be flexible, keep the grades open through the weekend, input some stuff that gets filled in late, so we'll, uh, we'll work right through the last deadline we can. And then last Saturday, we had no more kids, most kids we've had on a Saturday, we had ten kids, and only a handful less were required to be there. Some we invited just as an opportunity, and they took us up on, so it's really, I'm pleased with the way it's working.
You've got kids voluntarily coming on Saturday?
Yeah, we have to invite them, we do, right, I don't know.
Food always works, man, food always works.
Me and Zach might be in there next Saturday.
You get breakfast, pizza, and I might come learn. That's pretty impressive, though.
That is awesome. We are supportive.
So, yeah, Mr. President.
Okay, so I'm Christine. Oh, oh, Lynn, sorry.
Hi, we're good, we're, we're running. Um, I wanted to celebrate my music department, I know that we just had a concert, uh, a post-holiday concert, um, hearing some of our newbies on stage. John and I kind of looked and kind of giggled with some of the sounds, knowing that at the end of this year, they're gonna have a full-on ensemble, and when they come in on Wednesdays and Wednesdays and take over the gym, they've already improved tremendously, so just being able to have them back together and watching our kids thrive in environments. Um, as a mom, kudos to the middle high school, they had the winter ball, and my son was thrilled to be able to go to a dance, and, you know, just having some of that normalcy back to show that, yeah, today was a hard day, tomorrow's gonna be a hard day with the masking, you never know what's happening, the world's unpredictable, but getting our kids back together in the environments that they love, and we support them so well in, um, so as a mom, I had to celebrate that as well, so.
Yeah, and I should have added, I think there's two, Terry Roberts and Letty Edgerton, the, the spread they have at the dances.
That's where you wanna come for.
Warm food, cold food, appetizers.
Here's a dino nod, you swear, ahead.
Chicken nuggets, incredible. They worked literally all day on Saturday to get ready for Saturday, that's after Friday night's middle school dance, they did a nice job, those two, you know, youth, youth club is who sponsored it, and those two are leading, uh, Lori Rudolph, I should mention too.
Okay, on to exciting stuff here with our capital, uh, with our, um, first presentation on our, um, budget for this season. John, do you wanna start?
Sure. So, um, some of the priorities that we always keep in mind as an admin team and as a district moving forward into the budget. First of all, we start with the instructional. We want to support our literacy and math initiatives, our, obviously you are aware that, um, we have hired a, um, literacy specialist and a math specialist. We want to provide students with multi-tier systems of support, um, not only in academic, but also behavioral and social emotional learning. Um, those are both in full modes here at the elementary and the middle high school, um, as Matt just kind of talked about, the academic piece. Partnerships to support students with their social emotional learning. Obviously, we're gonna continue our, uh, partnership with the Genesee County Mental Health, JACASA. We have Rachel's Challenge as our character education program, and then you are also aware that we have a great new social worker on our staff, um, this school year and for years to come. Fiscal priorities, obviously, we want to maintain the appropriate level of staffing, which we look at student enrollment and, um, always look at, uh, you know, where we are at, and I'll talk a little bit more, or I think Christine will talk a little bit more about, um, some staffing needs that we believe are a priority for next school year. We also want to maintain or expand our educational programs and extracurricular activities. There is not one thing more disappointing and worse and makes a superintendent lose sleep if staffing needs to be reduced or cut, or programs need to be cut, or you can't expand on what you already have. Um, when I say reducing or cutting, um, where you're forced to, you know, obviously with, you know, admin retiring or people retiring in different departments, certainly you take a look to see, you know, how can you, you know, reorg, but there's nothing worse than, you know, having cuts and being, um, you know, concerned going into the school year that people that are working, you know, humans that, that work in this district for whatever you do, that you may have to lay them off. So we always want to make sure that, uh, we're maintaining our levels of staffing, if not expanding on them. We want to continue our transportation vehicle replacement plan, um, obviously for the safety of our students, Christine will talk a little bit about that. Last year, we did pause our replacement of buses, so we are looking to purchase two buses, um, for next school year. We also want to make sure that we ensure our fiscal stability that supports our short and long-term district initiatives, that kind of goes along with the next bullet point in our creation of our facilities committee. We want to make sure that we have a long-range facilities plan that certainly has minimal impact on taxpayers. As I mentioned before, there's not, there's not a better investment than taking money and putting it into a capital reserve, and then going out and having a capital project, especially when we receive almost ninefold of that back from the state. So, obviously, um, you know, taxes and ins and outs and, and annual budgets are not gonna keep this campus and these buildings, um, in good shape. So we certainly want to make a, make sure that we have a long-range facilities plan, and we prioritize, you know, what needs to be done here on campus. And then certainly, with, you know, this day and age, support our student and staff technology needs. So those are, um, a lot of the things that we keep at the forefront of our mind when we're creating, you know, uh, budgets.
Um, I'm gonna talk a little bit about some of the, uh, expenditure assumptions that, um, go into the numbers that you're gonna see following this. Um, for salaries, um, they're calculated as per the employment contracts with our OATA, CSCEA, and our Administrators Association. Other employees that aren't covered by those, we calculate it in here at three percent, uh, annual increase. Um, and also, we reviewed our staffing levels, both instructionally and non-instructionally, to make sure that we're obviously supporting our, um, priorities. Um, benefits, we made the assumptions, uh, based on feedback from the Health Consortium, um, for our health insurance to be a between twelve and a half and fifteen percent increase. That's a pretty large increase.
Christine, what's the wrong number on that?
I have, I have a slide coming forward, I can show you that. Um, and TRS rate is ten percent, uh, up a little bit from nine point eight, but not a significant increase for our TRS rate, that's for the teachers' retirement system. And our ERS rate, which is the employee retirement system, all the non-instructional staff, um, that actually is down, um, a pretty good penny, so, um, that, that's, that's a good thing. Um, equipment, we talked about this, um, we're going, trying to get back into, um, an annual replacement of our, our buses. Um, it won't always be two full-size passenger buses, but we didn't purchase those last year. Last year, we purchased sixty thousand dollars' worth of, of the smaller vehicles. Um, when you're only taking one or two students, uh, to and off private location, or, if I remember good, private school, um, those are more convenient to take the larger vehicles. So this would replace that, um, we're out, um, we wanna continue with the safety and security on campus with, um, the outdoor PA stroke notification project. Um, it's a four, it, we've gotten quotes for forty-one thousand dollars, um, however, we do get BOSI's aid on that, and that is, we're aided at eighty-three percent, so, um, the net cost to that, um, is significantly less. Um, and we also received a request, too, from the athletic department for, um, a port of pit, uh, for the high jump, for, which is about ten thousand dollars. Um, insurance, um, we are going, um, have started the process to get a separate policy for cyber security. Um, initial quotes are between nine and eleven thousand dollars, I did factor that into our, um, calculations.
Why the separate policy, Christine? What, is that based on the audit that we just, that we just got?
So, our current policy, given the ransomware cyber attacks that school districts are facing, we'd like to up the ante and, and the coverage. If you recall, last year, what school district was it out in Rochester?
Victor and.
Yeah, um, it's, what's that?
Victor Schools.
Yes.
The, the multiple.
Yeah, and, um, there, there's a, a push and very much a need and a, and a, and a request from, for all school districts to increase their policies on that moving forward, um, and we think it's, it's a good investment. We hope that it never happens here, but, uh, to just to kind of increase our policies and our coverage, I think just is, is a, is a safe.
Absolutely. And, and another mitigating factor to those costs, um, I did have conversations with our insurance agent. We, our loss, um, um, loss runs for the district have been minimal, we haven't had any payouts in multiple years. So their thoughts, too, are we can offset some of that cost as well by increasing some of our, um, um, deductibles. So what we save on that, too, will help offset that cost. Um, it's definitely a worthwhile investment for, for the exposure that you have, um, with everything being electronic, all the kids on devices, um, you know, Rob tries all the time to, to catch us on the know-befores and, and the phishing attempts and, and, um, they're, they're, they're tricky.
Sure.
They're tricky and easy to fall victim to, so. Um, capital project, obviously, um, we have a capital project going on now, the anticipation is to complete that sometime in the fall and complete our final cost reports in December. How that factors into our budget is that we will have, um, our ban will be turned into a bond next year, we'll have principal payments on that, uh, so that will factor in as well. Um, and we do want to continue on with those hundred thousand dollar capital outlay projects. We get aid at ninety-two point seven percent, we get that the next year. So that first year, you've got that outlay of, of a hundred thousand dollars, you don't get the aid till the next year, but now, this year, I've got the aid from the prior year coming in, and it's just for nine thousand dollars, you're getting a hundred thousand dollars' worth of work done. So, um, the last two projects that we've done have been, um, the PA system at the elementary and the high school. This project this year is, um, enhancing the back bus loop entrance, the student entrance, so it's, you know, it's a student entrance, um, and also the, um, athletic entrance and the pool entrance by the, um, the new parking lot out back. Um, it brightens them up, puts some lighting in there, um, makes it a little easier for, you know, people coming to the district to know where to go. Um, and then next year, the project, the planned project is the, um, gym bleachers and divider that were taken out of the capital project, um, for cost savings. On an overview, I know this is probably, you know, everybody's eyes always go to the bottom line, we see the significant increase. What's driving that is, is, for the most part, the debt service. Um, the first year that, as we come off the capital project and we complete it and we start to go out for bonding, we are gonna have some significant, um, you're gonna start seeing the debt payments come on. So the very first year, because if we get the, the final cost reports in December, we will have a debt service payment that year, but we will also get aid that will offset that. So don't be alarmed by that increase of bottom line of two point three million, the debt service of one point three million is driving it, but we actually will be getting aid to offset that. I'm gonna dive into each of these numbers in a little more detail in the next slide. So, starting at the top with salaries, um, the salary expenditures, again, we talked about it before, but this is the biggest portion of our budget, it's forty percent, we're people-driven, um, business. Uh, forty percent of our budget is that, it's obviously, those costs are driven by collective bargaining agreements, um, and the managerial comp, contracts that are, um, uh, we do an annual increase of, of three percent. We have, uh, had conversations with our elementary school, um, and have identified a need for an additional special ed teacher at the elementary school, uh, that we estimate that would cost about forty-six thousand nine hundred, uh, in salaries. Um, an additional one FTE maintenance staff, we've been talking about this for probably since last fall, uh, that there's a need there. This gives us flexibility, they can be a grounds person, they can do that, they can help in a custodial fashion, and they can help in a maintenance fashion. If I've got a grounds person, they're kind of geared towards one thing, so this gives us some flexibility, um, with that. Um, and also, in addition of a secretarial position, um, with the new guidance suite, um, and mental health area being isolated from the main office and not having Heather's support there, and some of, um, other administrative staff needing some support to do things like, you know, purchase orders and paperwork and following up on, on those types of things, um, this person would be a multifaceted secretarial position, but they would be seated at the guidance department. Um, and it would be sort of supporting buildings of grounds, transportation, technology, um, and our athletic director, too, as needed, and transportation, although Josh says he doesn't need us. And transportation, although Josh says he doesn't need it. God bless him. So this has, you know, I know it doesn't seem, it probably doesn't seem like it's a lot that it's going up, $188,000, but understand that some of the salaries that we had budgeted for last spring are actually being paid for out of some of the federal funds. So those have come out of the current year's numbers, so that's, that's why. So next year is that second year of that, and... Benefits, here's where we dive a little bit more into that. Matt, on that top line there for the health insurance, now, I said it's between 12.5% and 15%. I projected just the health insurance at 15%, but things like the vision and dental that's not through the Health Consortium, those plans that we have, those did not, I did not project as high of an increase for those. We haven't gotten feedback on them, so that's why it balances out to about 14%. Social Security, I raised a little bit because of the salaries. State retirement system is down 25,000 based on the, that's the employee one, where you saw the big rate change, where that rate went down. So that's going down. Teacher retirement system, up just a, a little bit because of the rate went up and obviously salaries, salaries go up. Termination benefits, what those are, are when someone leaves and they cash in their sick days, that goes into a 105H for them. This is just something we budget, that amount every year, you don't always know when that's gonna happen, so. When you have someone who's been here a long time, it can be a big, a big number. Unemployment, I chose to take that out. We have an unemployment reserve that we can pull from, that they, if, an auditor might argue that it's a little overfunded based on our experience. We've had zero unemployment claims. So they, they would argue and say, why do you have that large of a unemployment reserve? We don't need that. So we have that we can pull from if we ever experienced that. But we haven't had that experience, so I didn't think it was prudent to budget additional funds for that. Our workers' comp, I brought that down to be more with trend, it's, we've been trending about 80. We've been budgeting 100, and I brought that down to 90. So overall, benefits are up 7%, 7.43% from $341,000. Debt services is kind of, this is the big dollar amount. So debt service is 16% of our budget every year. This is what, these are the payments that we make on the bonds for all the projects that we've done. Mostly offset by building aid. And when I get on the revenue side of this presentation, you'll see that those revenue numbers and what, it'll make a little more sense. You get the aid of, on these things, on a project, over the life of the project. So every year, if I've got, basically, I might have $1.2 million worth of an aid payment, a debt service payment, I'll get building aid back on that for about 90%. Okay? So when you see the increase, that 1.3 million on that first line for principal, that's going up, it's two principal payments. There's the one in June when we go to bond, we have a principal payment. And also, I'm, in talking with our municipal advisory firm, we have a large debt service reserve in the amount of $406,000 that's just accumulated, it keeps accumulating every year, a little bit at a time. You're supposed to use that to pay down debt associated with the, the funds that have sourced that debt service reserve. So if, say, you've sold a building and you've got $100,000, you need to use that to, to pay off the debt. So at some point in time, we need, we needed to start whittling that down. This year seemed to make sense to do that while we're going out to bond the capital project. We would bond less, our interest cost would be less, and more of the aid that's coming in then from the project, it frees up some of that to go back into a capital reserve. BOSI services, Dan's probably gonna correct me on some of this, I don't know, but, BOSI services are, we're very fortunate, we have 83.3% aid on our BOSI's expenditures. It's 10% of our budget, a lot of rural districts rely a lot on BOSI services for things. We're meeting with BOSI's on January 27th to review district services, and on February 10th to review the special ed services. Our admin team is planning to meet after that to kind of button up specific needs for next year. At this point, I, I did a rollover budget with some increases. One of the things that is in here is we are changing our accounting software, and I did budget for that in here. It's through BOSI's, but it's BOSI's debatable. The current software we have is not BOSI's debatable. It's not supported by BOSI's. It's very difficult to get service, and there's seven districts across New York State that are on it. It's very much geared, it's like kind of fitting a square peg in a round hole. It's, it's great for some municipalities, but for me, for, I think for a school district, being, having the same software as all the peers in your BOSI's, there's, yeah, you can't go wrong with that, so. And we now have a district clerk who also has experience on it too, and I have experience on it. So it'll be a nice, it won't be a bad learning curve. So also included in that is that $41,000 stroke purchase that I talked about, that was also factored into that, that increase. And assumptions also included a 3.5% increase in, in some of the fees from BOSI's. But again, these, this is an expense that is, we get revenue for. And again, I'll, you'll see that revenue when we get to that part. So I know overall, you know, we're, we're taking a look at this, it's a big increase from the prior year, but again, mostly driven by that, that principal and interest on the bands. But those are funded with building aid and debt service reserve. On the revenue side of things, this is where we're looking at right now, based on information that we have at hand. I did not, on the second line for property taxes, as you can see, I did not factor into the bottom line, an increase in the property tax at this point. I wanna be able to, when we get down to the, the bottom and show where we're at, that's, we can start making decisions based, based off of the bottom line. But the state aid actually, if you notice that increase, it's an 11.59% increase, that's where your building aid is. Okay? I'll go into that in a little bit more deeper, a little later. And we have a big increase in our pilot revenue. And again, if you see at the very bottom there, I'm showing us using that $406,000 debt service reserve to also help pay for those, that extra principal payment. State aid, I can tell you in all my time in, in schools of finance, this is probably the first year that I've not felt, felt like we were being held hostage from an executive budget release. That came out on the 18th, it was a 5.4% total increase over 21, 22 actuals. That was not factoring in this new building aid. You know, you may see that on this one sheet, it says I have 15 million, this says 14 aid, it's just because I don't have that extra payment in there. And you won't see it on the aid runs because we haven't filed our final cost report, but we'll get that. The legislative budget is due out April 1st. Building aid in, in the executive budget, the executive budget has it at 2.1 million, but we're gonna end up at 3.1 million for that. Foundation aid, part of the state aid numbers above, that's 9.6 million. We, most districts got about 3% that were, we were pretty close to being fully funded on our foundation aid, I don't know if we called, talking about that last year. BOSI's aid, we talked about that. And transportation aid, they're expense-based aids that are driven by anticipated 21, 22 expenses in those categories. So our BOSI's aid is, is showing an increase of 29%. You know, we're, we're back to, we're back to business full-time here. So our expenses this year for BOSI's are higher, so we expect the aid to be higher. And the same for transportation aid, they had an 8.7% increase over the prior year. And those two numbers are directly from the state aid runs. The tax levy, the CPIU was 4.7%. This is the first time in the history of, since the tax cap legislation has been enacted that that CPIU has, where inflation has exceeded the 2%. So our allowable growth factor is 2%. So on the right, I know it's confusing, it's confusing to do it too, do the calculation. I think those of you who were at our workshop last year saw that, you know, you can put, show the swing in different directions with that, that calculator, so. But that's how the numbers are shaking out to a 1.8, 1.88% tax levy limit for us, it's the district, which would yield the district $101,000 if we were to choose that. Historically, last year, we went out to a 1.95%. That was the, the actual cap. We chose to go to the cap. Again, it brought our levy to, up 103,000 to the 5.4 million that it's at right now. For '22, '23, we could go up 1.88, which would net the district 101,834. Again, what we finally decide upon is, is still a question. Here's a historical look at the tax levy cap. In yellow, you will see the allowable levy limit that we've, over, over the history, this goes back right to the beginning of the legislation of the tax cap. We've chosen, which is the blue line, is the actual levy that we've chosen to, to go Pilot revenue, this year, our pilot revenue is 883,902. It's an increase of 308,368, it's, which is year one of the 20-year pilot with Plug Power. I always say it wrong.
You got it that time.
I did get it that time. That's in addition to the existing ones that we have with Empire Pipeline and Bright Oak Solar. Those two are both pretty early on in their tax, or their pilots. We have a couple of potential pilots for years '23, '24, and beyond. They're small portions in our district, not worth quantifying at this point in time until we, we have more information, the deals aren't done, so. And I don't know, I just wanna mention it in case anyone, you know, recalls, we did have that education investment agreement with Plug Power. Sorry, I should, probably should have put that on there, that it is with them. That is not pilot revenue, that is a separate bucket of money, it's a separate agreement. The first payment is not until '23, '24, and it's for $357,000. So as you know, the tax, we've talked about this before, the pilots factor into your tax cap calculator. They count as revenue sources and decrease what you can, and could potentially put a district in a negative tax cap situation, which is, is, is a difficult situation to be in. So a lot of these organizations are now offering up options to the districts to make pilots a little more palatable to them. School districts are pretty unique, it impacts us differently than it does other municipalities, so they've come up with this option to help us. But again, $357,000, keep it in the back of your mind for '23, '24.
So for your potential new pilots, just curious, are, are you caring anything about the, the large project, the solar project on Lockport Road? Is that, is that no longer in the...
Who's even had any?
No, I usually get notifications, and as soon as I get a notification, we create a folder and, you know, we try to attend meetings and, you know...
Mark Massey's been wonderful about always, we used to have meetings with him quite frequently. So if there's anything active going on that he needs to involve us with, reaches right out to us, so.
So they're supposed to be the largest solar project in the state. I've heard that they're having trouble negotiating the pilots. I don't know if it's just posturing. It would be negotiating with the county, I would expect.
Yeah, most of them do. What was that, Lockport? No, I haven't heard a word.
Okay.
And that, is that the one that's fully in our district, the town of Alabama?
No, it's quite a lot in our district though. It would be Lockport Road over to 98, east of 98, so Elbow and...
So would have a big impact. Yeah, oh yeah. Yeah.
Is that the, so, solar, you said?
Solar, yeah. It's, it's a $500 million project, it would be the largest in the state. Construction was supposed to start this summer, but again, I'd heard there was issues with negotiating the pilots. If you talk to Mark anytime, so maybe see if you can get an insight.
Is there, is there a name of the, associated with it?
I'm not sure what they're called or not, but Lockport Road, Oakfield over to Elbow, he would know for sure.
We will talk to him about it. So right now, we're looking at, on the revenue side of the budget is $23,636,703. Expenditures are coming in, $23,718,151. Right now, I've got a gap of 81,458. I don't see that as insurmountable. We have options. Obviously, we can appropriate more fund balance, we can use any, you know, projected surplus from this year, and, and/or, you know, use, use reserves. Like right now, I'm only showing us using the, that service reserve to pay those, but there's options with the ERS if we were to go down that path. So these are conversations that we'll have, we're still have, I still have meetings with the administrators to go through as far as, you know, billing requests and, and staffing and things like that. So we will certainly be adjusting numbers and, and buttoning things up. Finally, I just want to give you a little heads up, this is our reserves overview. Starting, if you look at the top, obviously, you see that our unemployment reserve is funded at $400,000. For a district that has had zero unemployment claims, again, state controllers out it are gonna come in and say, you need to reduce that. So again, an option. So the second line there, the, the teachers' retirement reserve, it's a new reserve, we can start funding 2% of our teacher salaries for that each year. Last year, we funded $130,000 into that. And capital reserve, I wanna comment on that. That $870,000 is what we put in at the end of last year, because we use that 1.6 that's in there towards our current capital project. So that $870,000 is starting to, to build in, obviously, what we factored into the conversations that we have at our facilities committee meetings. And again, if you can look at that too, that reserve for debt, it's just sat there. It just keeps accumulating interest and premiums on, on bonds. So it's really not serving any purpose other than we can use it to pay down debt, and I think that I'm suggesting that we do that this year. A good time to do it at the same time that you're also bonding. Budget timeline, where we're at now, next month's meeting on February 15th is the instructional and another preliminary budget presentation at the regular board meeting. I will have to upload the tax levy calculation to the state on March 1st, and then on March 15th, we'll do another full budget model presentation at the regular board meeting. And the rest of the, the items there lead up to the May 17th vote. On April 19th is when we will have to approve the budget. So between now and then, I hope that we can, you know, get you the information that, that you need, answer any of the questions you might have. I know one thing that we did last year, and I don't know if our new, new board members would be interested in this, if you need to, we can, I'm more than happy to schedule a budget workshop to go over anything. I pull up my spreadsheets, I show you the calculations, that tax cap calculator, what happens if you add a pilot, what happens when you take away a pilot, any, anything that you wanna take a look at, I'd be happy to show, so. Last but not least, federal stimulus money, I wanna give you a little status update on it. Reiterate what it is and what it isn't. It's not general fund money. It's not general fund money. What I just presented on has, is, is not this, these ones. They don't factor in other than kind of interrelated. This is, this is supposed to supplement, not supplant. It's federal grant money. It's accounted for in the special aid fund. Their allowable uses are to carry out activities addressing lost instructional time, the summer enrichment programs, and the evidence-based after-school programs. And the key thing here is it's evidence-based programming. It made it very difficult when we were going through our process of completing the application. So here, we all thought we were swimming in money and the whole application process. I think we can all agree, at least the admin team, that it was very confusing. We had more questions and, but we, we got them, we got them, we got them done. Acronyms that explain what you'll see on the next page. These are the buckets of funds that we had. Two of them, Serissa Esser two and Serissa Ger two. Those were approved. We've actually just started seeing some funding come in on that. Our ARP Esser three shows online is being approved, but we haven't received any funding yet. The after-school learning, summer learning, and learning loss, we just got that application in December seventeenth. We are hearing that districts are starting to get feedback. The process will probably be, they'll say, change this, change that, you can't spend it on this, come up with something different that's evidence-based, go to what works warehouse, and find a different solution to spend the money. So, and we'll work through that process when we get that feedback. And then we have two smaller buckets that, that Michelle and I will work on for the specialized side of the house, that were kind of like a little surprise extra. And another great thing that happened for our district, I want to give an update. During the twenty-one, twenty-two year, we also got some additional federal funding. It's called the emergency connectivity funding, and it enabled us to purchase Chromebooks for our students and staff and get one hundred percent reimbursement for it. So it's about two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars that our district has been approved for. We've received the first two buckets, the hundred and eighty and the seventy. Those two are in, and we've received the money. The twenty-eight thousand dollar check just came in the mail today, literally. The four hundred and forty thousand, the four hundred and forty Chromebooks, those are not delivered yet, so we won't get reimbursement for those until it's delivered. But we also haven't paid for them yet. Okay?
Robert's like a kid in the candy store.
Yeah. What do you do with the old technology when it's replaced? What, what do we do with the old technology when it's replaced?
Right now, we're going to be retiring Chromebooks that are going on seven years old. You should never have them be on five years. And we didn't buy any Chromebooks for a year and a half because of COVID, so we were on pause. So now that has helped us to catch up and maybe one or two more grade levels forward than we would have come down. But yeah, all the ones we're retiring now are beyond the sixth, seven year.
What do they do?
Do we sell them? Do you just give them away? What do we do with them?
If they were obtained through Smart Schools money, which they were in the beginning, the district does own them, and we have rights to sell them. They have expired, they don't get Google updates, so nobody is willing to give us any money for them. Two years ago, when I knew this was coming, I did sell them for twenty-eight dollars apiece, which gave us funding to buy new Dell desktops that we needed anyways. So they had value when they still were receiving updates. But after five to six years, Google no longer provides updates, so nobody wants them because they, essentially, they're useless. And usually have hinge issues, keyboard issues, batteries need replacing. So yes, we could give them away, but it may not work very well at all, and they, they don't have much value. And those are the ones that the district got through, through funding through the Smart Schools program. After that, as of my second year here, about sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, those are all bought through Bosse's, just like they are today. And when you're done with Bosse's, I, we don't own it, Bosse's does, it goes back to Bosse's, and they properly recycle it. So we don't have the opportunity to sell them because we technically don't own them. Bosse's owns them, which is why they give us eighty-three percent reimbursement.
Right.
Is there some expiring federal money? You know, I know you were talking about federal money, but first, it's like the social worker that we hired, we, I think we funded that for the first, what, couple of years or something like that through the federal money. Is there, is there some things that we need to be prepared for, that are being paid for now through grants that are, that we will be on the hook for down the road? Do you want to answer that?
You had a great answer earlier today. I just, thank you, I've been talking for a while.
So Christine and I and the admin team have been very careful in understanding that this money's going to stop in three years, and we don't want to be on a hook for something that we possibly can't afford. So talking about, you know, the literacy specialist, the math specialist, we're anticipating in two or three years that we're, we're going to have retirements. So when you have a top-rated teacher retire and you bring in, I mean, there's savings there. The one concern that I have is I know that there are districts that just load it up on staff. They're the ones that are going to be in trouble. If you're hiring ten, twelve, eighteen people, you're going to be in trouble in three years. So we took a look at, at our long-range, you know, plan, should I say, you know, financial plan. And so anything that we have purchased, that we are, you know, sustaining through these funds, will be easily absorbed and, you know, supported after, after the three years when, you know, that money runs out, so.
Adding three positions seems ambitious.
No, because there is a, a high need for an additional special education teacher down at the elementary. You know, I spoke with Lynn and Michelle, or, you know, they came to me, I don't know, you know, I do have, you know, the reasons why. We currently have a self-contained three-through-five class. There is going to be a need to have a more restrictive self-contained class for grades one through three. You know, we have the, the teacher aides that would help support that class, but we don't have the staffing. And, you know, with the learning loss and just the needs of the kids coming into the district, definitely is something that, that is absolutely needed at the elementary. I don't know if I.
Yeah, Michelle and I, that's going to be one of the things that we talk about in February. We want to show you the data and kind of our reasoning behind it. A lot of it is driven by early intervention. Michelle and I both firmly believe that if we can get some of our students right now who are struggling to maintain, second grade is one of my areas, we have a high population of specialized students. I have two different classrooms. One group is receiving over a hundred minutes of resource room. That's us just grasping at straws. They can handle ten minutes in the classroom at second grade content. They're working so much lower that they need to go out to receive that individualized instruction. Michelle and I firmly believe that if we are able to get those students and identify them, starting kindergarten first, let them have the time, K or first, second, third, we're hoping to be able to get them back into a co-teach classroom by fourth, fifth, or when they come over to Matt's building. So again, we're going to come to you in February to really kind of break that down a little bit more, but we do believe that there are some students that, for various reasons, whether they didn't have a UPK program, or they did a half-day program, that we think that that early intervention is going to help some of those students get out of self-contained, where in our years past, we've been a little bit reactive, and those students that haven't been able to have the same success and growth, by the time they're in third grade, third, fourth, fifth, now we're putting them into a special class, and we feel like that's a little bit counterintuitive.
It's late in the game.
It's very late.
And I, and I think too, that you hit it, second grade right now, like I would say across the nation is really hurting.
Yes.
And I think you're going to have, that's where the greatest learning loss has been, because that's when really COVID kicked in, and you're seeing kids that, like, not, they're, they're borderline special needs, but the presenting is having special needs because they haven't had that direct instruction.
They might be curriculum disabled because of the way things have been rolling, so.
Correct, and this is a nice way to kind of, you know, kind of quell that, and, and then hopefully, because our, our goal is, I think, here at Oakfield, is to, to get them back into the classroom without so much disruption within the general population. And I think right now, if you're to walk, God bless second grade teachers, they're right there with the, with the UPK and kindergarten, and that's a tough spot, I think.
Right now, for our second grade, I have three gen I teachers, two specialized teachers, and two aides going to service three classrooms because the needs are so great. So it can't continue to ignore it. We need to be proactive.
And good for you to do that, because I don't think a lot of people are really looking at that, at, at all, doing anything creative in that area. I think it could be a time where we go, you know, school districts, look at an extended second perhaps, like we used to with Mrs. Forty, an extended first, or, you know, a fourth section, and you just have to be creative, I think, and I think it's a really smart approach right now. And then, you know, just because they're self-contained from, you know, a teacher's position, that self-contained position for one year doesn't mean that they can't come out of that self-containment. They can, they can be specialized teachers anywhere, K, K-six, I imagine. So it's a pretty smart decision, I, I think.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, if you made it, then never mind.
Now we're going to throw all of us.
The other two positions, I don't know.
The other two positions, since day one, I've told Jordan that he is short-staffed. Just given the, the size of this campus, whether it's groundskeeping, and, and we've made this a, you know, a, you know, a maintenance position, so there's a little more flexibility, he is short-staffed. I always thought that from day one, and, you know, just given the fact that, you know, COVID kind of hit, you know, a year after I was here, and okay, there's no kids here, and last year, we kind of, I don't want to say stumbled through, but, you know, it was what it was. Now that we're back full-time, he, he needs to, you know, up his staff, so that's certainly a need. And then looking at the, the reorganization of the counselors, our mental health office, you know, I, you know, Jordan does not have any sort of secretary to help him with his paperwork, the demands of the athletic director, just, you know, canceling games and phone calls, and, you know, making appointments, and, you know, helping out the counselors. The counselors are going to be far, not far removed, but in a different location than the main office, and Heather was one that would usually help them out. They're going to need some assistance. So to have a, a utility secretarial position that could help, you know, three or four people in a handful of departments is definitely, definitely necessary, so.
Did we lose some efficiencies with the way we moved some of those offices around the mental health suite and the guidance counselors to have created that need?
I, you know, I'd say it's, it's pros and cons. You know, the mental health, you know, the social worker, that does need to be a private area. The counselors being, I don't want to say removed, but they're not attached to the main office. I do like them having a suite. The issue comes in is I think, I think we talked about it, that Heather is overloaded in the main office, because kids come down and they want to see Chad and Kristen, and Heather's there, and she's answering phones, and the kids are there, and she's got to say, oh, okay, is Chad there? And now that they're going to have a separate suite with a waiting area, where that's where we think we're going to put the secretary, will, will help them out. There's a lot of filing that needs to be done, a lot of appointments that Chad and Kristen need help with, and I, honestly, I think it relieves a little bit of the work off of, of Heather. And then, again, you throw in, now we could have help for Jordan, help for Josh, even though he says he doesn't need it. You know, even, even Rob, so to say, you know, at the end of the year, he's trying to collect all these Chromebooks back. And then, again, you know, chef's responsibility, you know, he's, he's a one-man show, and he's, you know, still teaching, you know, five classes during the day, you know, just to be able to have someone else, you know, do some of the, the paperwork, we felt is a, is a very good use of, use of our resources in, in hiring another secretary.
Because Rob, do you use somebody right now to help you out a little bit?
I have nobody, no.
You, no, no aides?
Well, we have Laura Looney is what would you call her role? She helps with frontline defense where it says, my Chromebook's not working, they go to her office. However, she's not rarely there.
So we're short-staffed in regard to subs, so Laura Looney is a very unique role. She serves as our in-school suspension monitor. We don't have kids in in-school suspension much, so our efficiency is to have her serve as our Chromebook corner. When the kid has an issue with the Chromebook, they go to Laura. More and more recently, we're taking Laura and putting her out in classrooms. So now there's a sign on her door, letting kids know where to find her. That's not an efficient job.
That's hard for Brown.
Yes, because I'm hardly ever in my office. I'm everywhere, under tables, wiring stuff, fixing this, there, everywhere. If a kid, ten periods of the day, comes down and says it's not working, there has to be someone there to receive it, hand out a loaner, do some basic troubleshooting, and most of the time, Laura's not there, but the kids can find, okay, she's in Mr. Pete's room, she's in the library, and they, so they go to the Chromebook corner, then they go elsewhere to find her, and she's good about bringing supplies with her. So it's been working, but it's not a perfect solution, especially when kids don't know, okay, it's, this is her room, why is she not there? So it'd be great to have, just like, main office, always has a person there. You go there, there's someone there to receive you. Same thing really has to happen with Chromebooks, or styluses, or plenty of other technical uses.
Any other questions?
No?
This becomes clear, you know, as, as the months go on, it'll become more clear, but
Yeah, no, yeah, thank you. This is, yeah, this is.
Knowing that these numbers could change with cover coming out of their executive proposal, and we'll see what the legislative branch can say.
And usually.
We're hitting a thousand-dollar gap.
Yeah, usually you see an increase in the April budget, and so I'm, again, like I said, it's the first year I've gone into a, a budget in my time in finance, school finance, that I haven't felt major anxiety after an executive budget was released.
It feels better than last year.
Not done.
He's filing for these federal stimulus funds. I know it's, it's quite an endeavor to get these and get these in and keep them, keep them on track, to bring in three point four million dollars is a.
And that stuff that's going straight to, you know, I mean, it's providing things for the kids, that the, the summer programming, the after-school learning, the, the learning loss, I mean, the stuff that Connie's purchasing with these things, you know, the development of this stuff, and the, the teachers that are using it to implement, you know, instructional needs for the kids, then it's just, we need, we need to apply for it, and we need to aggressively go after it. If we get it, we get it, you know?
Thank you. And a new business, be it resolved that items eight point two through eight point seven be approved by consent agenda? Make a motion. So, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion passes. Okay, communications, we'll look, I have a, I'm hold here. Other than that, I think that's it. Okay, thank you. So for roundtable tonight, it looks like we have the instructional calendar for twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah, so I'm providing the board a draft look at the twenty-two, twenty-three instructional calendar for next year. There are not any major changes. I'll mention that normally, we have a superintendent conference day the Thursday before Labor Day. That's usually for the teachers to get settled in and, and work in their classrooms, and then Tuesday after Labor Day is, is usually the kickoff. That might switch. There's flexibility where we could make Thursday the kickoff, and then Tuesday time for teachers to work in their room right before that Wednesday. So I'll work with Wendy and the OATA. It, you know, certainly doesn't matter to me if they have a preference, but, you know, those two days are, are normally set. The one change that we do have, in years past, we've always had a superintendent conference day in October, and that was always the Friday before the Columbus holiday, so that was like a four-day weekend. The concern with that is almost every single district does that. So if we wanted to do any sort of professional development, or bring speakers in, or bring professional development into our district, it's hard to get those people. So what we decided was to move that superintendent conference day to January. We connected it on to the end of the winter recess. So if you take a look at the January calendar, January first is a Sunday, so we're not able to come back on a Monday because we need to recognize and, and celebrate New Year's Day on a, on a workday. because we need to recognize and celebrate New Year's Day on a workday. So we wouldn't come back till Tuesday anyway. So we decided to have a superintendent conference day on that Tuesday. One, to give the students, you know, another day on their vacation. But to have the staff come back, you know, hopefully rejuvenated and coming back from a vacation and kind of easing back into it, we probably would have no problem if we wanted to, to have, you know, Connie find, you know, people to come in and, you know, provide professional development. I mean, I know it's down the line, but we felt that it would be just a little bit of a nice change, better opportunities for our district, if we move that super conference day to January 3rd. As far as the days off, obviously, this calendar is 186 workdays for the teachers. You still get the Wednesday off before Thanksgiving. You get December 23rd off. And again, there would be an extra day for the kids at the end. The February break like this year is just that Monday and Tuesday. The other superintendent conference day, we were looking to take place in March, March 20th, which is a Monday. Lynn has some parent-teacher conferences at the elementary building. And those parent-teacher conferences, technically by state regulations, should not also be on a day that kids have off. So if she's got a couple of half-days, they shouldn't also be on a, they need to be during the full weeks. So it just provides a little bit of flexibility for Lynn to schedule her parent conferences. And as I mentioned to our admin team, I think it's better to have a superintendent conference day on a Monday than a Friday. You know, Friday, you're tired, you're done, you're gassed. And so to have, you know, some real good professional development to happen, we felt like it's better coming off a weekend. So we just moved back to a Monday. The spring break, Dan, do you know when GVEP's spring break is? Have they set that calendar yet?
No, they're going to get together, they talked about it last week, pulling together another group in a couple of weeks here, just starting to work on that.
So the spring break in April, I'm just going with what usually occurs is, Easter is on the 9th. So most districts give the week off beforehand, because most contracts give Good Friday off. So school districts will take off the 3rd through the 7th. We're lucky in a sense that we have an extra day to use. So just like this year, we'll be able to give the Easter Monday off after Easter. I think the community enjoys that. That being said, if for some reason, most of the school districts in this region have Good Friday off and the following week off, I can certainly make that switch. It's not a big deal. What usually occurs is school districts will do the week of Good Friday, because they're only using five days. If they have to Good Friday off, which most contracts do, and they have to take that Friday off, they don't want to waste, I don't want to say waste, but they don't want to utilize another day and have that next week off, now you're utilizing six. So I have a feeling that the districts will take that 3rd through the 7th off. And again, we just have that extra day in there. So we'll have the Monday of Easter off. There's still the four-day Memorial Weekend in May. And then certainly, Juneteenth is on the 19th. And the last day of school is on the 23rd with graduation, again, set for that Saturday before on the 17th. So really, no major changes, other than, you know, moving a little bit of the superintendent conference days around. So this is for your review. I don't know if you have any questions. I'll put this on for the February board meeting to be approved. But, you know, a chance to take a look at it. And if between now and then something pops up, or, you know, everybody's changing the Easter break, I'll let you know. But I don't know if you have any questions?
No, I myself like the move for the professional development day after winter break, or Christmas, whatever, the holiday break there in January. But I'm not on staff here. You said at some point you'll sit down with Wendy?
We did talk, she did see the calendar. I don't think there were any major concerns. Again, I think, you know, at the beginning of the year, if, you know, they want to have Thursdays the kickoff and Tuesdays the workday, I have no problem with that.
So when you develop this, Dan, do you develop it with the admin team? Or how does that, how do you construct this? Because some of those districts have like district committees where they.
So what I do, because I'm a math guy, is I have to make sure that there's 186 days in there. Then I sit down with the admin team, and really, I plug in all the vacation times, look to see when the holidays are, when they're going to be celebrated. And then, what I do is I sit down with the admin team and say, really, we talk about the two superintendent conference days. Because the fifth one that we have is always the, you know, the last day of school, the rating day. So the admin team had some input on, you know, the two superintendent conference days, the one in January and the one in March. And then once I have a draft of this, you know, I kind of give it to Wendy and say, you know, what are your thoughts? And we go from there. And like I said, I usually keep it pretty consistent, you know, from the years past is, you know, the longer Thanksgiving break, and, you know, the four-day Memorial Weekend, and having the Monday off after Easter, and, you know. So there's not, from year to year, there's not too many changes.
Any other questions, guys?
You know, the only other flexibility, and I'll continue, you know, is that we, you know, we don't have that February break. We do have the Monday, Tuesday off. You know, I've been questioned before on why don't we have a February break? And I said we could. But then, you'd lose the Monday off after Easter, you know, you wouldn't have this day, you probably wouldn't have a four-day Memorial Week, like. And I think people appreciate the longer vacations. And again, you still have a four-day weekend in the middle of February. I know those are kind of the dog days of winter. But I think, I think people appreciate the extra days here and there than in February, so.
Okay, so that'll be up for vote later down the road. On to personnel. Be it resolved that items 11.2 through 11.11 be approved by consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Real quick for the discussion here. I just want to know a couple of things in here. In this consent agenda, we are approving Justin Olson's permanent position here as a senior custodian. And I'd just like to thank him for all the hard work that he's put in since he's been, I don't know if you call it probationary period, but he's done a really great job doing what he does. It's not easy taking on that position. And then the other one here is Mrs. Glidden. I think she is, she's resigning at the end of this year. And retiring, sorry. Yeah, retiring, resigning is definitely different. Retiring is definitely different. And she's just done a lot for the Oakfield School District. I thought her letter was, had a lot of passion there. And just kind of reflects the person that she is and has been for our kids. Twenty-one years, I believe, she's been here, I think, that's the number that I'm thinking of. And I think she's had a pretty big impact on any student that she's come in contact. If it's through her fax classes or yoga instruction, I think she's just done a really wonderful job. And she's going to be a top person, I think, to replace here. So I think I'd be remiss if we didn't acknowledge her retirement. So can, all in favor, I suppose? Opposed? Motion passes.
Can I quickly introduce Michaela Hill? She is graduate of 2014. She's coming back to us as speech improvement. Let's take your practice home. Help me, it's, I'm tired.
Speech in turn.
Yes, so she's here two days late with Amy Kojay. So welcome back to the district.
Welcome, welcome.
You haven't been gone for long, Michaela. Remember giving you slices at Santino's when you were a little girl. Hopefully, your manners have gotten better.
Must be a typo there.
I'm sorry.
No, we had the last three just separate due to the.
Oh.
There's the third one that you.
So I, okay, I had to apologize. So let's see here, I apologize, guys.
So you do want to do 11, 12?
Do 12, 13, 14.
So, so let's see here. So then I went, what was, help me out here, I'm tired as well.
You went through 11.
Oh, I see it. And then I pulled it out anyways. Jeepers creepers. That was a little trigger too soon there on that one. Okay, so let's do this. Can I get approval for Justin Olson to the permanent position of senior custodian effective January 1st, 2022? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We had the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's passed. And then for the retirement of Mrs. Glidden. Accept the letter of retirement of Denise Glidden, a fax teacher with thanks and regret, effective June 30th, 2022. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion has been had there as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Sorry, sorry about that, guys. Then 11, 14. I recommend a motion to approve the appointment of Carla Cole. Secretary of the Superintendent, District Clerk. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Opposed? You may as well, you never know.
You can finish the meeting.
Congratulations, Josh. Yeah, thanks for coming. Of course, you're welcome. I don't see any reason to enter executive session tonight. So closing remarks. Dan?
Oh, I just kind of, you know, we were just, they were living and all the things that go on and the email from Joe Jankowski, I think it was, right? Feeling a cough, I just take a few minutes, but it's nice to see that last month was like literacy.
Yep.
Tonight with math and Matt and the team for your Saturday work and getting the kids, you know, it's just nice that it's still new education. I mean, while we're here, right? And it's great to see it here. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Dan. Brent?
Yeah, I mean, I'll echo exactly what he just said. It's so good last week with the literacy presentation, or last week, last month with literacy presentation, tonight with the math, and then hearing those numbers. What were those numbers again?
We're at 86% reduction in failed courses after the first marketing period. We are tolerating that, and I believe we'll approach it in a second.
That's incredible. I mean, there's your proof, very good, that this is effective, it's working. And I know there's so many people going above and beyond to make this happen for our students. So that's just commendable. Thank you.
I would have to go the same thing for Matt, especially the effectiveness of that program. It sounded really good when he presented it. It's really nice to see that it's working. And really, you know, I know, here into kids, oh, they're making us go to the Suns on the weekend. They're forcing us, it's punishment. You got kids going voluntarily now. So, I mean, you're really doing something right there. You know, it was definitely seen, I think, from the beginning by some of the kids that had to go, as a punishment. But now you have people voluntarily be it for donuts or whatever. They're showing up on Saturday, you know, so it's impressive.
Ms. Burgen and Mrs. Bookman, they were laughing, they were telling the kids. They kind of get the moment. There are some punishments involved. One kid was turned away, played again, but by and large, I do see it as a positive support.
And I think it is, you know, I know that's how you marketed it. And I think it's really actually getting there, you know, with the kids even, you know. So I think that, kudos to you. It, I like the extra effort and work. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Matt?
Nothing to add. Keep up the good work. That's great.
Very good point, thank you, Matt. Second?
Yeah, it's been nice to see some concerts going on and winter ball stuff. And kids were really just kind of like, mask or no mask, they're doing stuff and feeling good about it, taking pictures and doing a lot of nice, normal, I don't want to say that word too freely, but stuff, good stuff. And it's really nice to see all the people putting in the hard work to make those things happen. Because again, this is all, a lot of stuff behind the scenes that we don't get to see, or we do hear tidbits, and we know how much goes into it. But really nice to actually have the effect trickle down to the kids. So all the hard work does not go unnoticed and really appreciated by all. And, you know, as of everything with all the changes, this is a marathon. It's not a sprint. And hydrate. Hydrate and good nutrition and good sleep and take care of yourself. I did really appreciate Joe Jankowski's letter. He did really, you know, kind of focus on take care of yourself, be mindful of things around, and it does happen. And I do think we're going in a good direction, so there's hope and be patient.
Thanks, Jackie. I do appreciate the information that's coming from the LA and the math committee. Tying it to results and showing where we were and where we're going is so important to me. I think it's now's the time, right? Now's the time to investigate resources, programs, and see when it works. I don't believe that that state assessment is really going to always be that marker and maybe even be less as we move forward in the next couple of years. And now it's time to get our plan together, and I think it's happening. My questions that I have aren't to put anybody under the spotlight. It's just, I love to see where you're heading. And it's just so important to me that we get back to consistency. And I hear it, I hear it in the LA especially, and I'm starting to hear it in math. And I think it's just so important to me. And I know in the capital project, there's areas that could be definitely better right now, and they're frustrating. And I know the mask stuff is frustrating. Just hang on. And it's really greatly appreciated what you're doing every day. So please, we're one step closer, hopefully, to getting rid of these masks and just getting back to normal. So thank you, everybody. And I'd like to resolve that our regular meeting is adjourned at 8:29. Can I get a motion?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Enjoy the night, stay warm. You got to turn up the temperature.